Putting that together, and it was a lovely picture and a lovely presentation. With that, we have the Superintendent's Make a Difference Award. And with that, I'm gonna let Ms. Hemel get down there. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hemel.
But today, we are going to honor two of our students. And Ms. Douglas from Inverness Middle School, if you would come up and tell everyone about our shining stars, please.
Good afternoon, school board members, Mr. Mullen, Mr. Bradshaw, and Superintendent, Mrs. Hemel. I have the honor and pleasure today to recognize two outstanding Inverness Middle School students. We have Madison Smith and Madison Cassidy. And they both have the chevron pattern. I didn't get the memo, obviously. They are not only academic scholars at our school, they do a lot for our community as a whole. They both work very hard to feed needy families. They have been instrumental in feeding families for Thanksgiving and also making sure that all of our needy families have Christmas. Madison Cassidy works closely with our NJHS, National Junior Honor Society. She was instrumental in leading our camp food drive for our community. Madison Smith worked with Salvation Army very closely and also making sure that all of our needy families were taken care of. So, once again, not only are they just the best all-around academic students, they are just excellent role models for our community, and I wanted to recognize them tonight.
You know, when people talk about our young students and our young kids, and you'll be kids stuff for forever and ever. You know, people say, "Kids can't do this," or "Kids are running wild," and I go, "Really?" And, you know, and that's why we want to bring our students to the board, because we need to start showing off our students, oh, well, we got some amazing kids in our school district, and they go far beyond their academics, because usually our high-energy kids are high achievers, but they're also very well ingrained in our community and helping our needy families. So, we thank you both for what you've done to make a difference in the lives of our community.
We are going to move to our 5:30 certain public hearing. And so I am going to recess the regular board meeting and move into the public hearing. And I'm going to bring forward, if Mr. Chuck Dixon would come forward, first to approve -- I'm sorry, Mr. Dixon. To approve changes to policy seven point to four point seven one, participation of home education, private school, virtual school students, and extracurricular activities.
Yes, we have three policy changes for you this evening. These have been through Policy Informers Committee as well as school board workshops. And first one, as you stated, is policy four point seven one. This policy adds section three regarding Florida virtual school students, limits participation in activities to the student's own school, and revises the title of the policy. If you look at the language that's being changed, I believe at your workshop, I believe this Ms. Deutschman suggested that we put "to be a candidate" and specify that you had to, you weren't automatically on the team, that you had to be, you were a candidate for a slot on the team, and you were subject to the same requirements as any other student who was a candidate. So that's been added, and then that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dixon. Board members, any comment? No, I'm going to then open it up for public input. Anyone wishing to speak on policy four point seven one, participation of home education, private school, virtual school students, extracurricular activity? Anyone wishing to come forward to speak about it? Last call. Board members, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revision of policy four point seven one, as written, participation of home education, private school, and virtual school students in extracurricular activities.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the revisions to policy four point seven one, participation in home education, private school, and virtual school students in extracurricular activities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Dixon.
The next policy change is a request to approve the revision of policy five point eight oh athletics. This policy, or section four and five regarding concussions, adds citation number nine forty-three point oh four three eight Florida statutes.
Thank you. I'm opening up this to the public for public input on policy five point eight zero athletics. Asking for a second time, third and final time for public input. With that, I will turn to the board for a motion.
How about approval for the revision of policy five point eight zero athletics?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve revisions to policy five point eight zero athletics. Any more conversation?
I just have a question, actually, it's one on the end of line course, it's line number two, and it's talking about insurance, and all of us are so aware of insurance anymore. It says, "Students practicing or participating in any type of in-splastic athletic activity by approved of accident insurance and notices are covering medical expenses of any injuries sustained in sport." Is there an amount, or is there a good policy, an excellent policy that you have to have, or is it just a school policy that they get? What kind of policy? Is it one that would pay out $500,000 for an injury, or is it literally just $5,000?
I might have to check on that. I'm really going to.
There's a special policy for football.
That's a school type of insurance?
Well, school insurance is one type, and like, school board police, sun-plate football, blue cross, blue shield, that would be insurance. They would provide that. Then there's special football insurance. Sometimes kids get a different football, and then there's other school insurance which covers things outside.
And that would be higher, like, that would forbid a child to get injured in being a coma?
It just depends on what they pay for, like, any other insurance, you get liability coverage based on the court. This is just a requirement for medical insurance. You just have to help your.
So there's no specification of how involved a policy has to be, just so you have. Okay, the parents are aware of it.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And the final policy change is just a citation only for policy eight point one four regarding building inspections. Basically, the process we're following now, so we're just adding the citation one point one oh, one three point four two.
I'll open it up for public input on approve revisions to policy eight point one four inspections. Anyone wishing to come with forward? Third and final time. Board members?
I would like to approve the revision of policy eight point four inspections.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the revisions to policy eight point one four inspections. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. I will adjourn the public hearing, and then I have a public input timed certain for citizens' common. This opportunity is available on any subject, and I will just read the statement concerning public speakers. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect, and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take action on any presentation. Any person present who wishes to speak must fill out a green card, which is located in the back room. And I have one green card here this evening. It is for Ms. Herr, Mr. Herron, and his topic is on handbook amendments.
Ms. Hemel, Mr. Chairman of the Board, before I begin my comments, point my comments, I'd like to have a little recap here. In study after study and survey after survey, those schools who have enacted a standardized dress code or uniform have shown a marked decrease in violence.
I'm listening.
A marked decrease in violence, sexual assault and bullying, they've shown a decrease in classroom disruptions, they've shown increases in academics, tolerance of the students, and school spirit. Now, a couple months ago, Mrs. Powers made a comment that students had approached her concerning the standardized dress code or uniform. To this day, the school board has not made any further comments about that conversation she had. Part of the workshop of, that's my background, part of the workshop of January 29th, I had occasion to receive Mr. Kennedy's advice and input concerning procedures, so I wouldn't be interrupting the meeting with agenda items that were not germane to your agenda. I made note that a couple of amendments to the school board, to the, sorry, to the handbook code of conduct, dress code, were only editorial. And Mr. Kennedy, at that time, told me, as far as he knew, I was the only one concerned with the application and enforcement of the dress codes that currently exist in Citrus County. Now, being fair to Mr. Kennedy, is that submission fairly accurate?
Sir, it's your time.
Okay. Is that submission fairly accurate?
Sir, I think you already said, we already said, "We're not going to answer any questions. It's your time."
Oh, okay, fine, thank you. Marketing specialists have a national response to unsolicited surveys of three percent. A survey was done to all three Citrus County high schools. The question was, "Would you be interested in students having a standardized dress code?" The response I got was over ten times the national average. Less than twenty percent of the teachers responding said no, and only three had comments expanding on why they said no. Over eighty percent said yes, and twenty-seven of those had expanded their comments to the emphatic, "Yes." In fact, one teacher even said this, said, "Yes, but more importantly, I'd like to know there would be consistent enforcement from administration. There is nothing more undermining than having your question, students' dress code dressed into here. I was just talking to Administrator X, and I had nothing to say." So it appears that I am not the only one concerned with the application and enforcement of the dress code in Citrus County, and I would ask that this body, please, please revisit this matter on a more serious nature. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mullen, can you share with me if we have, if this board has issued up a survey out of this board, is direction of this board, a direction of superintendent? Mr. Bradshaw, is it something that we, that we would typically allow for me if I wanted to send out a survey as a board member? Would that be something as an individual board member that I'd be easily able to do? Or would that be something that would be the direction of, I'd need to have probably the whole board if I was going to send a survey out? Any board approval?
I guess the same question as whether that's appropriate, appropriate use of school board email, which I have a little problem.
Thank you. If you would, because I was under the impression that bulk emails were not something that we were sending out. With that, I would bring forward, we've done superintendent's recognition of outstanding school volunteers and Mentor of the Year for 2013, 2014.
Good afternoon. I have the honor today to present to you members of our school community who contribute to the success of our school district, and they're coming forward for recognition. These members represent the thirteen-hundred-plus volunteers and mentors who give tirelessly, unselfishly of their time to support our students and make a difference in the lives of our children, students, and our school system. So at this time, I'm going to first call up our Mentor of the Year award, which will in our school district. One of the awards that we're going to be distributing, and the first one that we're calling for, is the Bert Miller Outstanding Mentor of the Year Award. Okay? And this award is from Citrus County School District, and it serves as a tribute to Bert Miller, who was a former volunteer mentor, who worked tirelessly in his efforts in serving our schools and community. So this is an award that we give annually in his honor. The individuals that are recommended to this award demonstrate outstanding dedication and commitment to quality education. So, at this time, we, annually, as we do, we send out to the different schools, and we've asked for nominees for Mentors of the Year. And the winner for our district is Mr. Michael Quigley from Christopher Primary School. If he'll please come forward. Mr. Quigley has been a mentor. Mr. Quigley has been a mentor in our school system since 2004. He works currently with third-grade students, but he has, in the past year and a half, he has seventy, seventy-two hours of mentoring service plus one hundred and sixty-two volunteer hours for us. So he serves for us as a mentor and as a volunteer. I'm going to right now turn it over to Mr. Cates to say a few additional words.
Yes, thank you. Michael Quigley is a man that really gives back to his community. He has taught and led poetry in a local, in the area of women's correctional facility. He plays the flute and sings in his church choir. He not only, he doesn't ring the bell for Salvation Army at Christmas, he plays the flute to get people to put money in the pot. He, he leads a book study in his community's clubhouse. I think that's pretty interesting that he does that. He's a member of the Friends of the Coastal Region Library, works in their bookroom weekly and does their semi-yearly book sales. He volunteers in a first-grade classroom on a weekly basis. He's been teaching poetry to those children in other classrooms in our school, and he has been mentoring for, this is his tenth year mentoring, he's mentored some very at-risk students over the years and always gets good results. You can see Michael sitting in there at a table with his Scrabble, it's a custom Scrabble board, and he's sitting there with his student, and they're playing Scrabble and talking about many important topics. But he's been a wonderful mentor for us and very faithful. He's a, I didn't say he's a retired high school media specialist, too, but, so he's a, he's a man, a man of many talents, and we really appreciate him. Thank you, Mr. Quigley.
I believe in service. I practice it in many ways. My heart, however, is with the school, and I'm involved and with the school, the elementary school. My many thanks to Mrs. Brown, the principal, and Mrs. Young, assistant principal, and especially Terry Case, guidance counselor. I hope I can do it forever, the kids have given me so much more than I've given them. Thank you.
Awesome. Mrs. Quigley. Just want to recognize you two, so thank you for letting Mr. Quigley donate his hours and the time. At this time, the next three individuals.
Yes, before, no, but I didn't want Terry to get out before we, did we vote on it tonight already? We voted tonight to retire you young man, and I want you to know that, at his request, but, and I thank you, Ms. Hemel, but I will tell you that one of the finest that we have in our system, your love for students is immense, and I will tell you, though, as we've seen many of our retirees come back to us, the smile you have now is not anywhere near as the large smile you'll probably have this time next year. So, we will miss you very much. I know Ms. Brown will be missing you tremendously, but please don't be a stranger.
The next three individuals that we'll be recognizing are nominees for the Volunteer of the Year Award. And Department of Education runs Volunteer of the Year program, so we send up candidates, and these are our district representatives in three different categories. The first one is the senior category, and it is Sandy Workman from Rockcrusher Elementary. Mrs. Workman is a volunteer in KZ3 classrooms, but bottom line, she goes above and beyond, and she'll volunteer wherever needed. She will do any projects, she has a contingency of representatives from the school, the Rockcrusher here, to recognize her and to honor her. She has volunteered for our district for over twenty-two years, sixteen years at Rockcrusher Elementary. In the past year and a half, she has logged in over two hundred and thirty-three hours of volunteer service. And so we are most appreciative of your dedication of time to our students, and I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mrs. Johnson. Sandy, Rockcrusher Elementary wants to thank you for all of your time with our students, with our staff, and I have to say that when I go through the classrooms, I see you there on a weekly basis, always working with kids, always helping the teacher, doing whatever we ask. And as a matter of fact, I just got introduced to your husband, and the first thing he told me, he says, is, "My wife just loves you ladies." And he said that even, every Tuesday, when you come in to volunteer, if you're on a trip or, or just can't make it, that you call in and tell them what to do, because you're much needed at Rockcrusher. So, again, thank you so much. And Ms. Spittle? And thank you to Ms. Brown, she's our volunteer coordinator, and Ms. Spittle is the classroom that she has been volunteering in for the last sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years?
Oh, since ninety-eight.
Since ninety-eight, so, so, thank you. I'll be very quick, because I know Tanya's.
I'm really honored to accept this award. I'm proud to be part of this community. We've lived here for almost forty-four years, and while I'm grateful to be seen for what I, be recognized for what I give to Rockcrusher, the truth is, I'm truly rewarded every time I walk through that door. The administration, the teachers, my own teacher, and the staff make me feel so welcome and needed every day. I'd also like to thank my husband, which you've already done, but he supports me one hundred percent. He does whatever I ask for, of him for the school. He has built shelves for our classroom. He works the fall fest to earn monies for our class to buy supplies for crafts. He cuts wood and cardboard and things for our kindergarten kids to make crafts. So without him, you know, it's like anybody else, you have to have someone behind, pull up everything else. My most important thank you is to the children, which is why we all do what we do, and it's basically just about the kids. Thank you.
The next category for Volunteer of the Year is in the adult category, and it will go to Tanya Davis. Ms. Davis is from Lucanto Primary School, and she works in, you know, Parker Pike works as, she works in the third-grade classroom. But I understand from many of the people I've spoken with, that she works in other classrooms throughout the school, and, again, another person who is there countless hours will do what, anything that's needed. She will either be at book fair, PTO events, creating instructional materials, just wherever needed throughout the school. And here she's there pretty much daily. She's been a volunteer for four years, and in the last year and a half, she has volunteered or logged in over four hundred and eighty-five hours of service. Do you have anybody here with you that you'd like to introduce?
Just my husband and my kids are here.
Mrs. Lofton, if you want to come up and say a few words?
Years ago, when I was in the classroom, I was fortunate enough to have a volunteer, and from my perspective, oh my goodness, the value of a volunteer in the classroom. Until I got into this role, did I realize the impact, school-wide, that a volunteer has. You are instrumental to make every day work. The smile you bring is so incredibly wonderful, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
And the third Volunteer of the Year for Citrus County Schools that we will recognize is from our youth division, Brianna Johnson. Brianna is a senior at Lucanto High School, and she volunteers at Crest. She has been volunteering there for over three years. After dismissal, she goes over after dismissal and stays as long as she can, helps wherever she can, and then even during the summer, she has come in and helped and volunteered some time. In the past year and a half, now this is a high school student, a senior, she has over five hundred hours of volunteer service to Crest. Mr. Hayes is coming forward to say a few additional words. As he's coming up, Brianna, would you like to introduce some of your family members that you have here with you? members that you have here with you?
Everyone at Crest wants to thank Brianna so much. She's there every day after school, working. She's also a student, she's in the IB program at Lucanto, so, a four-point average, so, doing all the work there. She also does sports, she was in diving in the fall sport. She just got finished with weightlifting, and she made the States. So, she's a state, we all love weightlifting to make states. So, again, she's busy all the time, you see her waiting for kids in the front office with books, reading, getting, matter of fact, I tease her all the time, "Put that book away, you're not allowed to read right now, you finished school." But she's always reading, always preparing, but always, all the kids always want to see her. And she's learned from her mother, her mother is a teacher, a professional at our school, and has worked there, what, 10 years now?
12.
12 years now, so 12 years, so she takes, learns from her mother. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to recognize these individuals that contribute so much.
Thank you. And here we are, here to introduce the recognition for all the contributions to 2013, 2014 Citrus County Schools United Way and Educational Foundation District Campaign. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Regina.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And you can see by this grin on my face, I am very excited to be here and to publicly announce and to recognize something of a great monument achievement. We are recognizing the overall contribution to the 2014-15 Citrus County District Campaign. Our campaign kicked off September 30th and ran through October 31st of last school year. I'm proud to say, we had 39 different representatives participate in our district-wide campaign. That included all our schools and district departments as well. We are proud that we helped to service two different agencies in our community, two very valuable agencies. The Citrus County Education Foundation, the Vice President Eric Head has apologized that he could not be here this evening. I said I would smile for him, so this is for you, Eric. And we also have the Citrus County United Way with our, with the CEO of Citrus County United Way, Amy Meeks. Amy, would you come up here at this time? Amy is gonna just speak a little bit about United Way, and then I will let you know what our monetary value was this year for donations of our wonderful district, and I'll let you know which school will be getting the traveling trophy this year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alagretta. You know, without her team, we couldn't have had such a wonderful and interactive campaign this year. As you all did this evening, and by recognizing philanthropy and volunteerism, it's no wonder that your schools are so involved and such a big part of our United Way campaign. And I really believe that that starts at the top with our champion, Ms. Hemel for United Way. She's such a believer and always encouraging everyone to participate, whether she's dancing or, yes, or squeezing wallets, whatever it takes, we appreciate all of those efforts.
Mr. Voluntiers.
Yes, yes, exactly. But we're really just here to say thank you, and also to recognize a beautiful partnership that has expanded within United Way and this great school district, not only in the campaign capacity, but also with our relationship with WTI, helping students earn and achieve their... Last year, in a pilot program, we helped 19 adults earn a GED. We also helped several of those students go on and earn co-secondary education. We had eight students begin co-secondary this January, and we are in the process of interviewing even more students within WTI to help really shape and influence positive family futures, and helping those individuals to achieve family sustaining income. So, we're so proud to be working with you all in lots of different ways, and obviously, again, you know, you're such a huge part of our financial campaign, and we appreciate that effort so much. So, thank you to all of you, and thank you to Ms. Alagretta, and to Lisa Adele, and all of the teammates that we had involved in the campaign this year. So, I'll let Regina do the big unveiling.
All right. Excuse me, I need to bring this up. Well, I am super excited to share with you, first of all, the support of our district employees came to a total of $19,575. And might I say that the overall highest contributor for the second year in a row is Citrus Springs Elementary School, Mindy Wee, the representative. I think ladies, it's worth the picture in the front. All right.
Do I have to act like Scott Heber?
No one should do that. No one.
And thank you board for letting us recognize this wonderful contribution.
Ms. Harold, did you spell something for us?
I wouldn't spell it, I was a teen, I'm not a student, because my sixth grade elementary teacher, she didn't really give me a really good break foundation for spelling, I don't think.
Yes, I did.
I was just gonna say, did you just do that to him?
It could have possibly been maybe an elementary PE teacher that was then, possibly not being spelled out, because they're...
You were rough up here.
That's because you were spelling backwards. I can say backwards stuff, just like my mom, but I can't spell that.
I know the onomatopoeia is when you say that.
I know she's trying.
I spelled onomatopoeia.
That's a word. Not one of the words, for spell onomatopoeia. I'd only bet Mindy Wee.
And you know, if you didn't get to see the pictures, and you can find that Klitsch has got them on Facebook, but they actually had all the mascots on stage that night, and it was the coolest thing to see all that. So, with that, I am going to ask that Lynn Mitchell, media specialist, to come up, and they are going to do a presentation on Project Enable, which was a Laura Bush Foundation grant, was held over the summer at Syracuse University.
Last summer, well, before last summer, I was looking for different things. I belong to a listserv with over 10,000 media specialists on that listserv. So, we get a lot of different emails that come through and tell us about different things. And one of the things that I came across was a Project Enable. And enable means, and I don't want to get it wrong, so I'm gonna read it, "Expanding non-discriminatory, discriminatory access by librarians everywhere," which means that we want all students to be able to utilize and use the library and all the media centers without having any problem with access. So, it called for me to get, for a media specialist to get a team of three people from their school, and I did a general education teacher, the media specialist, and an ESE teacher. And at the last minute, my ESE teacher had a family problem and couldn't come, so, my husband, who was an ESE teacher for 27 years, volunteered to be the third person, and we went to Syracuse University for a five-day workshop, a very intensive workshop, on disability awareness, school disability law, evaluating accessibility universal design, planning inclusion instruction skills for the 21st century learner, and planning an accessible library. And I'm proud to say that we had the best school, of course, it's brand new for our media center, but we had the best of any of the other schools. We had the best accessibility in all ways. So, now I'm gonna let Dr. Robin Bell, my general ed teacher, talk about her portion.
Okay, I'm really, it's gonna be short and sweet, but anyway, we had a really great time in collaborating with the other teachers from all over the country in Syracuse, and I'm an educator of over 24 years, and Project Enable helped me come back and implement and design and organize my classroom to better meet the needs of students with disabilities, as well as instill the importance of collaboration with other students, faculty, and staff, and especially the library media specialist, when I would take my students to the library to help them have the best learning experience possible in implementing different strategies that we learn. And it was a wonderful experience, and we've come back and shared that with several teachers already, and I recommend it for anyone to go, if they get a chance, thank you.
Al Mitchell, GED teacher at WTI, and ESE certified.
You know, it all comes back to me, you know, I've left my roots of ESE, and I thought, well, I could really benefit this as a GED instructor, I get a lot of people with learning disabilities. So, some things that I really picked up that we might want to do as a board, or as a school system, is that, you know, we don't think about it when we built that new library to just have one little button for a person with a disability to be able to go in and have the least restricted environment. I think that, you know, Mrs. Mitchell and her design also put certain chairs in there for students that suffer from autism. So, you know, we got an opportunity for there, and people with dyslexic, you know, we learned there that some of the things that they're doing with it, like using transparency, different colored transparencies to place over pages or computer screens, to make it a little bit easier for them to read, it works for some, but didn't work for others. But it was a learning opportunity, and let me tell you, from 8 o'clock till 5 o'clock, we worked it, and Mrs. Mitchell did mention that there were over 20 teams of three from all over the country, and that means Hawaii, Arizona, California. And to get picked for this was really an honor, to be able to go in and design things, and we really do things well. And I was an ESE teacher here when I first moved to this county, and I was very fortunate that I came from Appalachia, Ohio, in which ESE was very prevalent, we weren't, but we have a great involvement here of parents, teachers, and dedication, and it gave me a chance to get to my roots where I started. So, it was a great time, and we didn't live it all up, because we lived in the dorm, talk about flashbacks, no air conditioning, and, you know, so it wasn't all, and we ate dorm food. So, but thank you for getting the chance for us to share, and I hope that you include your media specialists in the designs of your future libraries, because it is important that the shelves are low enough for them to reach, you know, a person in a wheelchair can't get on a tall shelf. So, our, our goal is to make sure that the signage, entrance, and accessibility for all will be there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Did you all go with your old expense?
The Laura Bush Foundation paid for everything.
Oh, how nice.
So, paid airfare and everything. Of course, we had to stay in the dorm and eat dorm food, but...
And it was the first summer that I have not worked or taught in 38 years.
And I may even go with me to that workshop.
So, Lynn, how are you going to help share this knowledge with other people in our school system?
Okay, I've had, at the very first media specialist meeting that we had, I shared with the other media specialists, and I would be glad, and I'm sure my team would back me up, to do any in-services that the school board would like us to do for the other schools. Not a problem. We were trained the trainers, so they trained us to train other people, so that's what the program was. So, we are the trainers now, so we'd love to be able to help.
Thank you.
And one more note, we had an elevator problem at Christopher River High School, it was out for about a week and a half, and so, I set up a Skype set, computer in the library, and the kids who couldn't make it to class because they were on the second floor, and they were in a wheelchair or on crutches, Skyped with their classroom teacher. So, they weren't left out of any instruction, so...
Thanks for sharing.
One thing that Mrs. Mitchell didn't mention, though, is we're in the process of, she's in the process of writing a grant in order to get more eBooks in there, because, you know, maybe you might not be a good reader, but that doesn't mean that you can enjoy books. If we can put some eBooks in there, and headsets, and take these and do these for these students, then they can get the love of reading, just like you and I do. So, you know, it's important that we back these type of items.
I know that some of the schools were using their literacy grant from Education Foundation to buy books and licenses, eBooks, so I don't know if Christopher River High School did that, but I know, especially some of the elementary schools, use the NOCs and the Kingas a lot, and they used that money to invest so that students would have more access to books, take them home.
Yeah, and we haven't, we don't have any right now, but I've written a grant for S A E C, which I'm gonna present next Monday, to have some funds for that.
They probably don't have any money, we just, I just can't, we will have $40.
They had fund, carryovers.
You don't have to use literacy grants from the Education Foundation at your school?
I do not, I will find out.
That may be something that is on the agenda, so you may want to find out if that spending of those dollars is on that agenda to decide, you may wanna get in there.
I definitely will, I'm not shy.
Yeah.
About getting things for the library and for the students.
Definitely check that out before the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Mrs. Meeks, for me, because she really did service our students, and those 19 of them, you know, I got the chance to watch those and watch them grow, and they do do a fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving forward now to school operations, Mr. Mulling, Mr. Clutter, oh, Mr. Clutter's still here. Good evening, Mr. Clutter. Approval for out-of-state travel requests, if you'd like to come forward, sir.
Mrs. Werthaler is going to address the out-of-state travel request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I know this agenda request was to approve travel for four administrators, myself and three additional, to attend strength-based training in Gallup, a Gallup University training that is connected to a grant that was written for guaranteeing consistency in evaluation systems. So, it was part of a grant that came forward that was approved by this board last summer, and it's just a training component to support consistency in our schools and the values of practices, and in working with, building on the strengths of individuals, of both teachers and administrators.
How were the people identified as the participants?
We've been sending out, due to needs because of retirements and different things, we have been working through our HR and E committee to identify trainers for multiple trainings that have been a core part of our leadership development program. And so, we sent out to all our administrators and said, "Hey, are you interested in this? You know, would you like to be a trainer of any of these IOs?" And they sent back responses for different categories. Unfortunately, this is one of the trainings that we have to travel out-of-state for, and that therefore it came to the board. So, basically, these, the administrators expressed an interest in being a part of that training, and we went through and we said, "Okay, we'll have these do one type of training that has to do with culture in schools, we'll have someone else do instructional-based data learning, that type of thing." So, that these were just administrators that expressed an interest in becoming trainers for strength-based coaching.
Is this a follow-up from that Gallup wave of strength-based identification?
Absolutely. What it does is it takes Strength Finders, and where basically, you're learning about yourself, but this is the next phase, it's strength-based coaching. So, once you've learned about yourself, then you learn about the teams, and what that means in individuals, and how do you help them with identifying those strengths and talents, and capitalizing them in the workplace. So, how do we handle that, whether it's...
So, is it a follow-up to that training that took place?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, looking at the grant, the grant was written specifically to fund that expense?
The grant was written to fund consistency evaluation systems. It was a race-the-top grant for $45,000. So, we had to have different strategies. Some were training for administrators, and others were opportunities for teachers to observe effective instructional practices in classrooms. So, we have given funds to the schools to conduct lesson study activities. We've had other district trainings that we thought were going to also be an additional cost from Fast Performance Matters, and they didn't charge us anything for that. So, we've had a couple of different things that we've done out of this grant, but this was one of the trainings. was one of the trainings that we felt would also be supportive of the deliverables and the activities of the scope of that grant.
So I know that it says it's not to exceed the team. So when they, when your team comes back, there will be a follow-up?
Oh, absolutely. This is the thing, yes, I'm sorry. It will be, the follow-up training will continue to support the strength-based coaching that we've been doing throughout our district. But our trouble has been, we don't have any more certified trainers in our district. So we're trying to get back to having certified trainers again. That's what we're looking for. We need certified trainers, and we don't have them anymore. They have all retired, so.
Can you come back, will you be certified?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, we'll come back. We'll be certified trainers, and we'll be able to work at the different levels with strength-based coaching for administrators or instructional. We use this training in our potential leadership program, our Support Leadership Academy. We use it for lots of different trainings. It's a premise of one of the trainings that we feel are important in our school district.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you very much.
We've got any more questions?
I'm going to approve the out-of-state travel request for all these people.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryan, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the out-of-state request for, quote, "all these people," but we'll do for Lindy, Laura Wyndham, for Roland and Johns to attend the Successful Strengths Coaching Training, March 31st through April 3rd, 2014, in Omaha, Nebraska. Any other comments? And the chair will just say, too, that I had talked to one of our former executive team members, or I should say, I apologize, from one of the directors, who just could not say enough about this program and how valuable it is to have and for us to have these trainers. So I appreciate you all finding also money that we didn't have to necessarily spend for. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. With that, approve the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Turning legal matters.
The only thing that I have is that this is someone who wanted me to bring forward. There's a R O T C is going to be using an obstacle course over WTI, and there's a release form that needs to be signed by the students and the parents. So this is, it's the same one that was used with, for the sailing, when the kids went sailing. Remember that?
Sail Academy.
The Sail Academy. It's got a pretty big warning at the top.
Do you want to read that?
I could read it to you. And the reason that it's there is because under Florida statute, you have to have this warning at the top. It has to be five points bigger than the rest of the type for parents to sign a valid release. And, but I think that, I want you to know what it says in case you get a phone call because it talks about, you know, all kinds of good stuff. But this is strictly straight out of the statute. It says, note, and, you know, it says, shall be substantially in the following form, which basically means, insert. So, notice to the minor child's natural guardian pursuant to section 744.301 Florida statutes. Read this form completely and carefully. You are agreeing to let your minor child engage in a potentially dangerous activity. You are agreeing that even if the school board of Citrus County, Florida uses reasonable care in providing this activity, there is a chance your child may be seriously injured or killed by participating in this activity because there are certain dangers inherent in the activity which cannot be avoided or eliminated. By signing this form, you are giving up your child's right, your right to recover from the school board of Citrus County, Florida in a lawsuit for any personal injury, including theft to your child or any property dealers that results from the risks that are a natural part of the activity. You have the right to refuse to sign this form, and the school board of Citrus County, Florida has the right to refuse to let your child participate if you do not sign this form. But that's straight out of the statute.
I asked Mr. Bradshaw to bring that because I, he's, the legal advice is that we need to have our students sign that for the R O T C groups to go to WTI and run the obstacle course. I just felt like if something goes out like this, you know, you're not like, yeah, in the middle of the ocean, I just felt like it's pretty strong, and I feel like that you all may be getting phone calls, so I just...
Can we put a pretty logo on there? I'm just kidding. But it's the same one that basically, that same verbiage was used at the Sail Academy.
Yes, the one I'm trying to get the district to use, district law. I mean, if you're going to have a release executed by a parent regardless of their child, that this is at the top.
Can it be left in last words?
No, ma'am.
It's either those words or no words?
In my opinion, yes, ma'am. When it says, must be a valid release, you shall use substantially the following words, that's basically the legislature telling you, cut and paste.
And it has to go at the beginning?
Yes.
Does that have to be involved?
Yes.
When you say the Florida statutes make us do this, we are going to kill your child?
It says pursuant to Florida statutes.
Well, we really don't want to kill your child. We're not really putting them in danger. Well, of course, they fall on their head, but...
Right.
Well, they could fall on their head walking through the village.
Or somebody could question them.
Yeah. I know it's kind of draconian and kind of, you know, in your face, but it's, you need to have it.
What about if you go out for baseball?
What about it?
Do you have kids that sign one of those?
No, I don't think so. I think you sign something.
Whose bats are big and heavy? They could be considered weapons.
Yes, ma'am. You have F H S A.
Ah, okay.
So what, besides R O T C, the Sail Academy, what else are you proposing that this be attached to?
Well, whatever, I mean, people that say you need to have a release done for students that are, you know, participating in whatever.
Does that apply to your school?
That's probably not inherently dangerous activity.
Well, all right, who's deciding what's inherently dangerous and what's not?
You are, Ms. Deutschman.
Well, that's what we're saying. Well, no.
I don't get a phone call or anything saying...
But if you're proposing that we attach this language to everyone's lease...
No, ma'am, what I'm proposing is that if you want, if you think a release needs to be done, this is the release to use.
Regardless of the activity?
Correct. If, for a release, that's, this is a release for, for, you know, entry to your child. So if you're going to have them release, the school board, you know, sign a release to make it effective, you're going to have that.
So why don't we put that on their emergency cards?
I don't know.
And have everybody sign it.
Yeah, then we will get phone calls. Then we will definitely get phone calls.
Because this is really, it's all a click button.
They explain what they're going to do, though, in the course. You get, you're really reading down, you think they're going to get them, some high building and jump up on the hill.
Well, it says participate in the event, and that may be at the running obstacle course of WTI in this Florida.
So the very first sentence says that we recognize, or you recognize, or somebody should recognize that this is inherently dangerous and could result in their death.
Potentially dangerous. I don't know what to tell you, Ms. Deutschman. It's just by statute, it's, under the guardianship statute, it says parents are natural guardians, and if you want a parent to sign a release, then you need to have this language at the top.
So can we monitor this and see if we have people that are saying, well, I can sign this form so therefore my child can participate?
I'm sure that can be. I mean, whoever, I don't think that'd be a problem, I guess.
Not with me. I mean, I spoke to Mr. Bradshaw. I thought it was pretty harsh because we've got our kids going to our property on our obstacle course where they hang from the bars, they run up the ladder, do those kind of things. And I know, but it's no different than our elementary school kids at Emma's Primary getting on that pegboard where they...
The climbing wall.
The climbing wall. So I understand the legal side of it, and I understand his opinion. I just thought it was pretty harsh to go out for...
Teen driver challenge or something. Or, whether the Sail Academy does...
But they're in the middle of the ocean.
But that doesn't matter, they signed it on dry land.
They're headed out in the ocean. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that because I think if I got that as an R O T C parent going to another school property, I'd think you all were crazy, or we were crazy.
But lizards are like the ones that you sign at the hospital, they're in it, everything is listed there.
Yeah.
The only thing they don't put down is if the building falls on top of it.
Oh, now, now they're going to put it.
We just gave them a clue.
Exactly.
All right, we'll send this out, and we'll let you know the response. And if you all get calls, if you would let us know. We have, if you...
I will tell them to call you.
Tell them to call Mr. Mullin, who's in charge of the statement. Or Mr. Bradshaw. They can call Mr. Bradshaw.
Whatever your preference is. I have one other thing. I think it's going to, I'm done. I know that we're going to move into board member discussion. Is there any, I would like to leave if at all possible. My son is playing baseball in Southern County, just started, so I'd like to try to get there. Unless somebody has a specific question for me or anything else, if I like permission to go.
Anybody else? I have a quick one. And it's because you're here, and I want to make sure I mentioned it. Board members, you may be aware, we've got those polls, the communication polls at each of the school's sites. They were used a number of years ago for line-of-site communications to have Internet and network access. And they, you know, basically they point to a centralized poll, I think, or to each other. They are not, we don't use that technology anymore. The polls haven't been operational for a number of years. Mr., trying to think, no, H R, H R, I'm sorry, David Stevens, thank you. I'm sorry, I meant risk manager. David Stevens had mentioned to me at Florida School Board Association that when he was here, they'd evidently been approached about cell companies coming in and actually attaching to them and it becoming a revenue source. There is companies evidently, he claims, or he indicated that they come in and you contract with them, and they handle the entire operation. So we basically, they, we have one vendor, they go out and get the other contracts. There seem to be, when I asked Mr. Bradshaw some questions of whether we even own the poles, because that was a question.
How tall are these poles?
They're pretty tall.
They vary based on elevation they were installed.
Okay, so give me a height. What's a tall one?
150 feet.
Oh, they are really tall.
Yeah. So these are certainly, and evidently because cell companies have been looking, they, these are kind of prime...
We have one at our church, and they put a big cross.
They put crosses. I've seen those, the flag poles, the crosses. So my question is, is that it, and I asked Mr. Bradshaw, you know, where we were at, he gave me some, some information, but my question, I guess, to the board is, you know, one is, I think there's going to be a question at some point is, two, who's maintaining them? If those are being maintained, do we have an issue? Do they need to be utilized, removed? And if they are, if they can be utilized, is there a revenue stream that potentially we could tap into? But I think we need board direction to be able to say, do we look at, you know, getting an abandonment of property, first of all, so that we make a claim on the, you know, on them, or whether we're not interested in them and we need to somehow get them, them to take them over? So did I pretty much cover that?
I mean, I think we entered into that original contract in around 2001 or 2002, and then they terminated it in six or seven, 2006 or seven, when the technology got a little better, we didn't have to use the line-of-site. I know I wrote a letter to the company in 2008 saying, please go get your poles and say if you want to. I really haven't heard anything. So I do believe that we need to take some action, either claim ownership of them, get legal ownership of them, maintain them, try to use them as a revenue source, or to at least be able to tear them down, you know, or have them come get them or whatever.
So I guess, I guess that's the question. So board, you know, how would you like us to?
Here's what hap, here's what happens at my church. About once a year, a gigantic crane shows up, gigantic. They were there the other day. I don't know what the heck they're doing up there. I don't know if they're making it taller, whatever, but it's a huge piece of equipment that they have to bring in to put anything on those poles, so.
I thought you were talking about a bird.
No. Go ahead. So if you want to use those for cellphone transmissions, you're, you're going to be introducing some very large construction equipment into our...
That's a good, that's a good point, yeah.
...into our school system, and then, of course, you know...
Of course, then maybe we could, they could be an agreement that it has to be done after hours on the weekends or something.
Well, they haven't even know where these poles are. They're in the field, and they hardly get to.
Typically, they're located similar, located in a location similar, close to the schools.
Can we give Stanford an opportunity to explore the resource options with the poles?
I think we can. I think there's still the determination of what do we want to do about ownership of the poles.
I guess we need to know whether...
Well, if it has a value, we want to own it.
You have value or don't have value.
Well, then you don't need to figure that out. If you want me to try to figure out how we take legal title to them, that's different than telling them, come get them and try to...
I just don't really know more research, pros and cons.
Why don't we give that to Mr. Dixon, and he can research...
Thank you.
...the value options, and then he can get with Wes on that, the legal pieces of...
Yeah, because you have the Charlie Dean's property, and he put that big cellphone tower on there, and apparently it's lucrative to my point.
Well, that's my, a little bit of my hope as we talk about the budget, it'd be nice to find out that there's a, you know, we got a little Easter egg we didn't intend.
He gets about $5 million a year on cellphone towers, isn't he?
I would settle for a fraction of that at this point.
There has been interest, so this is a good opportunity for us to go there. There has been interest.
Wes, I want any child that wants to climb it to sign that form.
If we do that, I mean, there will be all kinds of safeguards.
You have a pole boss on your head.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Tell Wesley good luck.
Thank y'all.
Drive carefully.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, I apologize with everything going on. I did not copy those letters, but I did, I wanted, just before we went into the rest of the board, did you get it? Okay. There's so much happening as far as with the, you know, this, this issue of Duke. I think there, some of this may even come to conclusion here quickly. I still think there's a question of what tools we have, you know, available to us. One of the things that, you know, in having conversation would be, you know, even if we are, you know, in a jam like we've been put into, would we want to consider, we as a board, consider if the legislators gave us the option transferring capital to General without having to pay it back?
What capital?
Well, I think we have more capital available and reserved than we do at General if we wanted to even make that. Basically, would we rather say, let's put off, you know, maintaining something in order to keep the classrooms operational? That's not saying that. I think we'd all like just to be held harmless for the money, but I don't know that that's as, as likely. But I guess the question is, is I am still very much feeling that it can't hurt to send out the letter, so I'm still, you know, saying, let's send it out, but if you, but I want to get that feedback, and if so, if that letter, if you all would like to still move forward.
I liked the letter, but it was no specific remedy. That was, that was...
That was purposeful. And the purpose was to really say, we need help, and we're open to what that might be, so that we didn't, and my fear was to say that the legislators recognized, that we need, we needed them to intervene somehow, and that we aren't closed-minded as to what that remedy may mean. Because I think at this point, especially going into the legislative session, I think there seemed to be some reservation from the feedback we were getting that if it is only Citrus-specific, that's going to be a challenge to get passed. But if it was something, and I believe in this case, that it's, it's not going to be just Duke and just Citrus County. It could conceivably be any entity that wants to sue the county for their appraisal. A school board is going to be put into that same position as that we are.
I addressed the normal Citrus County. I saw your good friend the other day in Tallahassee, Miss Dula.
Notice she looked at me when that was said.
And I spoke a little bit about the Duke Energy issue, where I said, you know, I keep hearing that if it only affects Citrus County. Well, we had an increase in $1.4 million this year after Duke decided not to pay their bill in sparring city dollars, and that is from one pot of money. So those sparring city dollars came from every other small county in the state of Florida. So Chris's group that he represents, it impacts every one of them. So, you know, that piece about it's only Citrus County, it impacts every small county in the state of Florida.[1747.23] in the state of Florida.
Well, not only that, but it impacts the state's budget, because they have to go back and resupply us the money that they haven't budgeted and haven't set aside.
And that was.
And it's a bad precedent to set.
Well, it's not an equalization at, at the end of the day for us when that all happens. And as, as I've tried to help the public to understand, Citrus County is at the statutory maximum that we are allowed as far as collection of, of school taxes, in that we also don't have any additional that many districts have. You know, Flagler County, which is a similar-sized county, gets a half penny sales tax that's five and a half million dollars a year, and it's for 10 years that they get it. They're getting over 50 million dollars in their sales tax that we don't get, but they're similar-sized counties. And, you know, I sit there and go, and we're supposed to accomplish the same thing? Well, that's not equalization in, in a linear sense, but. So I guess I'm just asking for direction, because if you, if you are agreeable to do that, I would have Ms. Verarami print up the letters and then, as I understand, if we approve the letter, then each of you could sign it and then we can distribute it. And if there's anybody else on that list you'd like to see that, we can just simply add those names to, to send it out to. So I'm asking for board direction on that.
Did Mr. Blocker take a look at it?
I had sent it to Mr. Blocker and I had him do, and I've sent subsequent copies.
And so he has, the figures are all?
Yes, ma'am. I, yeah, I did. I had left some blanks until I had him fill them out.
Everything adds up, this is good.
Yes, ma'am. That was concerning, my. So Ms. Deutschman, I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant, are you okay?
I'm good, sir.
Ms. Balfour?
I'm pleased to present.
Oh, my pleasure. Ms. Powers? Oh. And I wanted to, I felt like if we're going to send it, we should just all sign it, that was my feeling, because it did that. Ms. Deutschman, are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I'll just ask, I guess, do I need a vote for it? Does anybody know? Or do you think we're just good with that?
I think we're good.
Okay. And so Ms. Verarami, you can print it out and then just have us each come in. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I'll go down to Ms. Mulder, do you have anything for us?
Just two things. One, Ms. Deutschman, about the Jump-a-thon that you asked about, kids going door-to-door.
Oh, right, 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 right.
They do not allow kids to go door-to-door. They even put it on the flyer. It goes out and then they reiterate it in a video that goes to the kids. For whatever reason, parents still get it.
Okay.
But the school doesn't, they do not allow kids to go.
Did you ask the school to remind the students not to go?
Yes, they, they do that as part of the program. They emphasize that before they get started and they also send it and a note on to the parents.
They tell them not to and they do it anyway.
Well, I know, but I'm wondering if they needed a little reminder, they don't want to even do this show.
I think they're done with this.
Oh, okay.
But all the principals pretty much confirm that they don't do tour coming from the race of the deal.
Okay, thank you.
And we also asked about the substitutes for the 10 consecutive days and asked the principals to review their processes with all their staff in the front office, so that if that was happening, let us know that that happened. Nobody responded, they weren't aware of that, but they did review all the processes with their staff to ensure that we don't do that for, to avoid the 10 consecutive days. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Mulder. Ms. Bryant?
Well, I ran at the African-American read-in for the seventh year in a row. Yes, I did. With Ms. Balfour and Mr. Kennedy, it was a lovely day.
I'm only three.
That's really all I've done.
That's all you've done? Now wait a minute, I know that's, but that's not.
I did go to Crest on Wednesday, they, they got their, oh, PBS award?
Yes.
They got their PBS award. Awesome. Yeah, wrong. Insurance meeting on Tuesday.
Any money for us? Less money?
Well, we're doing okay because of the Wellness Center.
Yeah.
The Wellness Center is saving our lives.
And, and, and a bunch of, and, and other ones too.
Yep.
Especially, it's been cold flu, everything's been going on, I'm sure they've been quite busy.
Yep. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Balfour?
Okay, on Monday, the fifth, I had the opportunity to go out with Captain Mike Bays and his team of teachers, volunteers, and of course, all fifth graders.
When's the fifth?
Monday, this past Monday is when I, when I was out there.
Okay, when the fifth then?
I stand corrected, it's going on seven o'clock. Bottom line is, I was out in the coast for five hours with a bunch of fifth graders and I loved everything I did, okay? And we had Captain, Captain Sprat was there as the one guiding the show, and it was a wonderful experience. I saw him again on Wednesday at Crest, sharing a Gator experience with Crest students, and I was so impressed with how the teachers made that event happen. And again, it's back to my opening statement about how it's so important to recognize the contributions every single day of all the staff members. Saw the upward bound elementary and I also, at the read-in, want to commend Gil Bo Carroll, who is a fourth grade teacher, she also serves on the SAC committee at Crystal River Primary, and she organizes student elections, she does home visits, this fourth grade teacher does home visits, and she's outstanding at building relationships and connections, and she had her students out at the African-American read-in on Sunday. And they were so polite and courteous, you could just tell the coaching was there. They stood up, they enunciated, and I was just very impressed. And of course, Donnie Brown, the principal, was there. Again, I started out with my opening, talking about how we want to focus on everyone and value what they contribute to our students. The title of the poem that I shared was "The One You Never Thought Cared," and again, it was by one of our own bus drivers here, a veteran bus driver, and to exemplify how that person cares, I just want to share with you a note. Dear friends and coworkers, last weekend, the home of a favorite former bus student of mine burned to the ground. I remembered picking up little Lori Porter from the middle school the first time from this house 13 years ago. After getting out of the service, Lori, Lori Richards, formerly Porter, moved back into her childhood home, and when I say getting out of the service, she served our country. So she comes back from serving our country and she moves back into her childhood home to raise her own family. So this house has not only held her new family, but a lot of childhood memories as well. Luckily, neither Lori or her family were in the house then, the night that it went up in flames, with the exception of a family dog. Lori has a husband, a five-year-old boy and a seven-month-old daughter, and this tragedy has left her and her family needing everything, everything. Lori is in immediate need for things for her children, like kids, kids' needs, like baby clothes, diapers, toys and so forth. So anything you can give or donate to Lori Richards and her family would be greatly appreciated. This is from a bus driver. Thanks for everyone that cares. So at this point, we're taking up a collection, there's a box at the Crystal River Bus Garage. Those of you that are interested in giving to Lori, she graduated with my youngest son, good lady. The number to reach, the person that's organizing this fundraiser, again, a bus driver, Kim Morrison, the number's 352-382-7485, if you have any questions or want to donate outside of bus garage hours. Thank you very much for your time and, you know, it's late now, we'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balfour. Ms. Powers?
I sent an email out to the, our teachers and to the guidance councils, reminding them that that's what we are, is giving three $1,500 scholarships to students, or seniors, and you want to continue in some sort of art education, they don't have to be majors, they just want to continue in art education. So I'm hoping that if any of you here know of anyone, one of the senior wants to do that, please have them fill out the application the guidance councils have them, and they'll, they'll get $1,500 if they're chosen. Secondly, the IB parents are looking at having some sort of scholarship initiative, awards, scholarships to the IB students, and of course.
I heard they were looking at that.
Yes, yes, so we're pleased with that.
That's huge.
Yeah, I usually go to the IB meetings to try to keep up with the last one, they canceled because it was an odd day, but a new one's coming up and so we'll get some more information on scholarships. So.
Ms. Balf, I'm, sorry, Ms. Deutschman?
So, speaking of scholarships.
Where's our checkbooks?
I have been working again on Golden Citrus Scholar Program, and again, we're a little behind schedule with the Chamber. The Chamber gets very distracted by strawberry festival and all the festivals. So I took it upon myself and Mr. Simon, we, we talked about this last year, we approached the Chamber and the Chamber asked for an opportunity to be able to raise funds to sponsor the program and to provide potentially some scholarship money, and they weren't able to meet their, actually, the basic funding for the program, really more than what has been done the last couple of years. So Mr. Simon and I met with Doug LaBelle and Eloy Nunez, Eloy Nunez is a governor, is that what you call that? Who's the Rotary?
He's the president.
He's the one of, of the six Rotarys.
He's the district.
The district. About working with us, because the school system is really not, this is not our, it's really the Chamber of Commerce and event, even though we're the ones that plan it and do all the work. They really are the sponsoring organization. But, but there's discussions now about engaging either other service organizations or corporate sponsors. One of the things that we envisioned was maybe having a corporate sponsor for each one of these categories and having a corporate sponsor like Wilmire or Publix or a bank or something sponsor a category three to $5,000, or a student pays at least $1,000, so we have, we always have our Hall of Fame winners and sometimes another category. So hopefully, this year, Mr. LaBelle went out and he already started fundraising and he's been very successful so far. Thank you, Doug.
I did talk to him yesterday.
I did talk to him yesterday, today, did he come out?
I updated for you.
Oh, okay.
I saw Eloy yesterday, Doug's already raised $3,000.
Right.
And their goal's to give at least five.
Right.
So they've got a short-term goal and a long-term goal.
Okay.
To expand.
Our long-term goal's $3,000.
Right, so they are working frantically to make things happen.
I really appreciate that. Yep, so, so.
And I told him how much he wrote.
So we have gone ahead, Mr. Simon and I have made a commitment, thank you, Mr. Simon, April 30th, it's going to be the Golden Citrus Scholar Event, and we'll have the CFC like we've had in the past. So now we've got to get busy sending out those applications, denomination forms to schools and having our process in place for making the selection and that sort of thing. The second thing I wanted to mention is, Linda Powers, I am so appreciative of you being able to get finally Spike's picture along. We've been working on this literally since we had our racial proclamation and died. And I know it's been difficult for the family, you know, to make a decision, I talked to Sean about it. And so one of the things that I hoped when we talked about this originally was, besides having this picture, to either have a copy of the proclamation, we have several, we have two, or even just a statement, which I think we had composed originally, about why this picture is there and who he is, and have it, you know, framed. So I don't know if you all have any ideas on what you would like to see, I can make a copy of the proclamation and also the statement we came up with, or do you want to talk about it now, or?
Maybe we break, give us a copy, let's review it and.
Okay. All right, so I'll do that, I'll have Linda include it in your packet, Linda, for next, our workshop, and we can decide that, and then just have it printed up by nice paper something and frame it, put it in the same frame as the picture.
Excellent.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Oh, wait, where's my notes? Oh, okay.
You have a list?
I do. Organizing my card today. I came across a unfinished business. The zero tolerance, I was having some questions again about what is our, in our discussion about zero tolerance. So, and I've, I've kind of referred the questions back to you from your notes from our minutes, because I think you can, you can search for that, right, about what kinds of questions we had about zero tolerance and the Renaissance Center for our next workshop in February, in February. Because a lot of those were raised in the expulsion, we don't record that. Right. That's the majority of us, I would not have them. Okay, well, what I reminded Mrs. Alagretta about was that our concerns had to do with consistency in our expulsion agreements, and, and I guess I forgot to tell her that some of our concerns were quarter or calendar days, you know, how did we figure, you know, what was the best interest of the students and how did they figure that out? And I think we also had some continuing concerns about what a student has already at the Renaissance for the transition and they violate the agreement, then what? You know, maybe we need to be more clear and have an agreement amongst ourselves what we think should be done, because sometimes I think the school comes to us and I'm not quite sure what avenue to take.
Right, we talked about flow chart.
Yeah, I have the flow chart in my card, we just need to update or agree that this is what we still believe or change it.
Was the flow, for some reason, I thought the flow chart was a procedural.
It wasn't a flow chart, it was a matrix.
Okay.
Maybe we can pick the topic up at a workshop so we can.
Well, we're going to discuss it at the February workshop, right? February, whatever date that is.
February, yeah.
Are you?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, thank you.
I'm just counting.
And we need him to.
At radio.
Law to, or we can't change it, and what we can change.
Right. And then the other thing is, we had our list of agreements about our, how we would conduct ourselves as a board collectively and as individual board members, and we still had one page left to do, so I didn't know when you all wanted to tackle that, but I don't want to keep putting it off.
We need to do that, because that continues to just be something, we need to get that agreement together and clarify with each other. February is, is February, are we all here for February's workshop?
I'll be up too.
You're out of town.
Oh, okay.
Because we, we keep, the more we put it off, the board just gets farther away from us. It, I'm willing in March at the regular board meeting to either come ahead, I mean, even if we came at luncheon or what and, and just, you know, what we could do, and if no objection, I'd say, why don't we meet upstairs?
In the morning?
That's fine, I mean, you know, 10, 11 o'clock? We do, Ms. Balfour?
Will you add the value adjustment at nine or 11?
At nine, when does, do you, I don't remember how long that usually goes.
This will be my second morning.
Okay.
I think this is, I think, no, I think it'd be done by nine or 10 for these. Did you all vote on a chairman this time? Have you hired the attorney?
Yes.
Ms. Bell, yeah.
Okay, have you hired the attorney?
Don't do it 10. So.
Yes, does that sound familiar?
That's it.
Okay, so what would the next one be? Yeah, you're not, you're not, maybe, I don't think you're acting on any appeals yet, maybe you are.
That's all I have, in my calendar, March 11th.
Well, if we did it even at 11:30, and we can always, I can always start the meeting and, and suspend it till, till one of us gets there.
I, I, I never recall a value adjustments meeting going beyond hours.
Doing hours.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So if we did it in 11, we'll do it at 11, and we'll have the, we'll, we'll public notice it for upstairs, for the workshop. And Ms. Balfour, what we do is it's public notice and they, there's still chairs of somebody, but allows us to have a little bit more intimate setting, to have conversation instead of this, you know, more formal setting. And then, and then we'll adjourn, you know, it, we'll adjourn prior to, to coming down here to the, for the rest of the meeting and for administrative hearings.
Okay, and then the legislative FSBA meeting is March 19th. Yeah, so who's going to that now?
I am.
Okay, good, you guys, when are you guys going now?
March 19th.
Was it Wednesday? Does it start Wednesday?
It is, it is Wednesday.
And staying until when?
I've got a meeting Friday morning.
Yeah, I got one all day Thursday afternoon.
I've got one early, I've got one.
So you'll be there Wednesday and Thursday night as well? Okay.
And I would remind you, and I am not there because the next week, my son has a page and during spring break, and so I'll be there during that time, and I figured whoever list of people you all tell me that I need to go and beat up, I will, I'll be beating on their doors.
Oh, but you're, as a chairman, you're not going to be there, but really, it's your responsibility to make us appointments, although.
Well, I can still make the appointments.
Are you, I'm going to be there all day Thursday afternoon, what are you doing Thursday afternoon, you know? And you have a meeting Friday, the FSBA Board of Directors.
Yeah, and I've got one Wednesday afternoon as well.
Yeah, but we're all in the meeting Wednesday afternoon.
Okay.
And then they have to, you meet with the legislative committee Thursday morning and then Thursday afternoon is meet your legislators, so.
I will, I'm happy to make the, to arrange all the meetings. So I'm assuming, first, you've got Representative Smith.
Right.
Senator Dean, is there other people that you'd like to, for me to set up?
Someone with Monford.
Go Monford.
Well, Monford would be-
Yeah, I would like to also say.
He probably won't be available.
Oh, wait, yeah, that date might be.
Well, and the other thing, everybody is up there, so everybody's meeting with their own lunch, like, last time, if I recall, we walked in, our Representative Smith, and he graciously sat, Ginger and I, he was drinking a cup of coffee, and he was taking a break, uh, between going to the floor, and he sat with us as long as we wanted.
Yes, it was awesome.
And we made an appointment only through Mr.'s Kerry's secret telephone number. So, you have magic.
I do have a couple of numbers. I do have a couple of numbers, and I have them, and now that he's with Dean, but, I mean, Ms. Powers has connections there, so if I-
You have the phone number.
You have the background.
Believe me, I had an issue last year where I had, um, who was it? It was the, no, it was the speech therapist said something was being voted on on the floor, and I was literally texting them, giving information to the floor at that time, so, I, yeah, I will make sure that's set up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
And then I'm gonna join you whenever I don't even know, this meeting is on the slate of officers, or something, I don't know how long it's gonna last or what the conversation is. Oh, I know they're interviewing people. I feel, oh, you guys can do it.
Also, just a reminder, and it, and it sounds like your document will be filled, but I do want to let you know that Citrus County Days in the Tallahassee are going on at that same time. Um, the guest speaker, Ms. Hamel, had arranged for, uh, Florida Educational Commissioner Pam Stewart, March twentieth.
Which, which, which of those dates is that?
I don't know.
That's Thursday.
That's Thursday at ten AM.
Oh, we're-
And it is gonna be at the Tallahassee Center located at, looks like, uh, Clemmons Plaza Restaurant. They, they, well, I can tell you, it's, it was arranged for Representative Smith, so I'm pretty sure he's gonna be there. Dean May, so, um, be, I just realized that that, we're gonna probably have to work around as well. So, I'll, and I'll get, um, I'll have Ms. Vergarami get some of the information from you, and then, and I'll make sure it happens.
Yeah, because last year, when we went to that meeting, that Thursday morning, who came to speak to us, but told me about it. Well, he's not there anymore, so that is a waste of time.
We've had, I've only been on the board three years, and there's been at least that many Florida School Board Commissioners, I mean, Florida, uh, Educational Commissioners, so-
I'd rather go with, uh, Pam Stewart.
It's, yeah, well, that's why.
But this is Chamber of Commerce, it's gonna-
It's okay, they have, they've given us, I can tell you, Representative Smith's office said, please be welcome to come. But, it's the, yeah, it's actually through the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC, um, but they usually, um, have Representative Smith put it together. They had, uh, the governor in a previous year, and he worked-
The Chamber's all in Texas, if you want to go. For launches.
Is, oh, that, that's it.
So, we're gonna get all this-
And I'll get information, and that, that brings up, um, I'm sorry, you done, which one was that? I, um, I am going to, and I, I sent out a one-way email, as you know, I try to disclose that when I send it out, but, um, of putting together a continual list of, of board member events, so that we know that they're going on. Did I, was that on your list?
I did get that, and I added-
And, and I, and please, if you see something, too, that we need to be doing, which one's that?
I did add to it, but I don't know, I, I don't know I, that I did it in time to make prime time.
That's okay, because I can keep sending them, because the idea to me is that it's, it's a continual that we're adding. I, even when I updated, this time I put the, um, the graduations on there, because I wanted us to start building that, so that we kind of have all that in place, mainly so that when people come to us, you know, we've, we've done that. So, um, on those, you know, I think you saw that we've got the Superintendent's, Wall of Fame on February twentieth here at four PM.
We've changed it, because there's too many people coming.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be WTI, room one fifteen, February.
Oh, you did have that.
Tell me again, February twentieth, what day?
Uh, four, at four PM, at WTI.
Don't tell me a building number, is it a building number?
WTI.
No, it's, it's the big building.
I know.
That's the, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I was being serious. It's, so, with a bank, the thing is, I'll, I'll give more direction, where the bank teller is, it's, it's that building.
That door.
Yeah, well, where the retirement parties are.
Yeah, and near cafeteria.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, we're-
Near guys.
Lastest guy, yes.
Go get some guidance.
So, um, and, and I want to thank Superintendent Hamel for doing that. I think that's gonna be a, an exciting event. Come back to eighteen eighty-seven. I know, they're not the pictures, they're not coming. Oh, it was definitely, I'm sure. Um, the other-
I do want, I want to make sure everybody knows I won't be in town. I'm gonna be in Venus, Florida.
There's a Venus, Florida?
I know.
Yes.
No, it's Venus.
It's Venus, as in Venus, if you will.
It is Venus. V E N U S, like Venus, the planet. So, it's, um, south of Lake Placid.
Out of this world.
It is literally out of this world.
As Doc said, it's out of this world.
I, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to make that, but I do want it on record, but I've got a good excuse, my son's getting married and-
Congratulations on that, too. Um, I, I want to bring this up, you know, we have regularly budget updates, which has been extremely important, I think, to, uh, just functioning and getting, and a lot of times, it's sometimes just a couple of sentences, uh, that's said, you know, thumbs up, side, you know, very rarely is a thumbs up, I guess I'd say, but, but you know, we have, but we have had, and we're gonna continue to have, the, uh, state standards issue, the assessments issue, that's affecting our classrooms, our budgets, and everything. And I guess what I'm asking is, would we be interested in, again, having in that same type of thing as the budget updates, having a, you know, a, a curriculum-type update that centers around saying, you know, where we act, you know, is there, have the changes come through in Common Core, the changes come through, and not anything more substantial than the broad brush strokes, that if they then have some additional things, we can go to Mr. Claude or Mr. Mullin and get some of that information, but, if we did that, I think then we'd kind of feel like there's any, you know, just, do you all have, you good?
And Mr. Claude used to give us quite a few updates, but we sort of stopped asking.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, if we just put it on as almost a standard agenda item, and, um, you know, and that way, you know, Mr. Claude, we give him something to do, since he just sits there and runs everything from his seat.
His app.
He's, yeah, because I've, I've gotten those twenty emails as he's been working hard. So, that's, uh, something I wanted to look at. The other thing, um, i- is budget, and, and this is, I guess, just, if the board has any thoughts on this, or whether I'm way off base again, but, the high school, um, staffing plan, it always continues to be a challenge, because from semester to semester, you know, how many reading, you know, remediation that we have, how many, you know, classes that we have, how many are needing to do this or that? And the fluidness of it seems to be sometimes a challenge, especially when we go, well, we have this one retiring, and they were the ones who taught trig, and now we don't know where we're gonna get a trig teacher. Mr. Byans, for example, you know, in his retiring, there are certain courses that it would be great to say, would you like to come back for one, to teach one course a day? Some of these teachers seem willing to come back and teach one or two courses a day, or be flexible to say, listen, if you need me for two classes, that's fine, but you know what, if you don't get that many, which normally we get into, how many teachers do we, you know, we're funding right now that we're not getting funding for because of where we're at, we could have some, maybe, that scalability, but it would mean, as a district, we relook at whether we have whole staffing units, or whether there is then some type of way of doing partial staffing.
You sort of think like the adjunct system.
It's, 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 it's interesting you said, I say, you know, I use that term, a adjunct teacher, because I do think, yeah.
I'm only random here, here, because I met with Flank and Kenny this morning.
No way.
As we're starting to talk about staffing.
If you tell me that you've been talking about this again-
No, I'm saying my office must be bug, because that's exactly what we were talking about this morning, because we did do that last year since we had, my teacher, um, was, they only needed that teacher for half a year, so they brought that teacher in for two, nine weeks, and then they didn't come back to work, but that was their choice. And we do think there's teachers out there, either retired teacher for, and I hate to say Greg on national TV, but maybe a Greg Byant, who would like to teach one class or two classes, because what we tried to do in the past, if we need another unit, we would hire a person on our planning period, but that takes away from any professional development, they do it that time and those types of things, so, we want to talk to principals about being flexible, thinking about jobs, you know, if you need four units or something, you've only got a teacher teaching three blocks, maybe we can find a teacher.
But, what, is a drop going off that path?
Well, it would affect, we couldn't-
It would affect some, too.
Yeah, if the teacher doesn't retire now.
Six months, three years?
One year. But, Pat, if they don't retire, may, if it's a teacher that, if wants to not work the whole time.
Yeah, if they're wanting to drop.
If they're completely retired, they'd have to wait a year to come back to work for us.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but if they just leave and, and just want to work part-time, then we might be at work time.
But, yeah, if somebody just then, because again, I, I do worry that, we talk about wanting to get more dual enrollment, you know, opportunities on campuses, because it's beneficial, I think, to CF, it sounds like, as well as to the school system. Um, we, and again, those AP, those other courses. I guess the, the, the feedback I'd love to be able to give our staff is, do we have any objection to if they find a way to, that that makes to, that we would be willing to support that, or we have no objection to that? Ms. Powers?
What, what I'm thinking, and I, and I've thought about this particular issue a long, long time, because it seemed to me like it was the direction education was heading in, and what concerned me, the teachers, um, you know, fully employed teachers, and would you then start slowly but surely replacing the teachers who are full-time teachers with adjunct teachers? And, but adjunct teachers do not have to have medical or retirement or anything else, it's, it's a totally different category, so I think that's something we need to consider when doing this.
And I, that's, that wouldn't be our intent. Our intent would be, if we had a high school, and they had four, maybe the four blocks of science, okay? Instead of hiring another full-time teacher, or taking those kids and telling them they just can't take that course, we would hire another teacher to teach that one block for that nine or eighteen one.
And that, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, but not replace all-
I think that's a great, great thing to say, yeah.
No, I agree.
We don't have a, a whole school of adjunct.
Right.
Right.
But, but assuming that it was a very, you know-
But, yeah, certainly, if you get a physics teacher for one period, you have, you know, someone will do it, you can't find-
Well, I think, I'd work. Speaking about dual enrollment for English dual enrollment, I, I think Chris River does, and we can't find a teacher because of the requirements, so, we've got a teacher out there who is retired, and may be out for a year, and they may want to come back to do something like a dual enrollment course.
That can work very well, but I want us to be sure, think of the teachers, and maybe, Vicki, you can sort of think that through in your mind, teachers, because I can, I can see it working beautifully now, but I don't want, if, if, where it's going is to have, I'm just, adjuncts and the like.
No, and I think that the intent should not be as a replacement in that way, but it is to fill a need.
And I don't think we call them adjunct.
No, and that, that's just, but, Ms. Balfour?
You know, I definitely see a need to be flexible. I do see a potential workshop topic here.
Yeah.
But I think giving staff the go-ahead to explore options to fill those needs is a critical piece that we need to provide for them. I'm anxious to hear some creative thoughts from staff. I know that they've got, um, a, a challenge ahead of them, that they do have the experience, too, so I'm looking forward to their opportunity to share.
Thank you, Ms. Balfour. And Ms. Brian?
I like it.
I can always count on that, Ms. Brian, on that, but, um, absolutely. Um, Ms. Hamel, I guess then I'm done, I just want to turn this to you.
No, I'm really good.
Okay. Ms. Vergarami, did you have anything you needed, any business for us?
No.
Okay. With that, if there's no objection, we stand adjourned.